Arrange this school board meeting. I'm such a gorgeous afternoon. It really is nice to see the ice is out on the lakes and that spring is finally here. I do have one adjustment in the agenda. It's going to be Action Item 9.4. And that is an approval of an overnight senior trip to Old Orchard Beach. So with that in mind, do I have a motion to approve the minutes of the April 15th meeting? So, okay, is there a second? Can't be second? Any discussion? All those in favor? Okay, thank you. Moving on, public comments. Do we have anyone here that has public comments?
I did just get a text message from Erin Smith. And she said, could you ask if my part will be before seven o'clock? Because if I keep driving, I could be there by seven.
I hope that it can be before seven. If we need to switch the action items around to accommodate, we can also do that. But our agenda is pretty light this evening.
Okay, awesome. I think she might have.
We have a couple of presentations this evening, which we're very much looking forward to. First is the pre-K 2 and middle school presentation in regards to the way in which they use their early release time this past year on Tuesday workshop days.
All right, I'll share the presentation.
Just to introduce kind of like our team. Katie is the Title I teacher and Katie Willis-Burton. Kathy works with Katie in Title I. And Ashley Farrow is the pre-K teacher at Dallas. The helper in there, they worked during their Tuesday time. They didn't really work with our group because they were learning more on the teaching strategies assessment that pre-K uses with Ashley being the new pre-K teacher. She was doing the webinars and learning how to do that developmental assessment that we use in pre-K. So that's what Dallas and Ashley did during their Tuesday time. And the rest of us with Allison Love, Rebecca Ellis did this. Okay, so this summer, looking on social media, I follow Katie also. We follow out of the same teaching blogs and teaching communities on Facebook, Instagram, all of those places that we follow teachers. And a lot of talk was about this book called Shifting the Balance. And it was really focusing on changing how reading is being taught. A lot of us were taught the balanced literacy model, which, you know, I learned how to teach reading over 23 years ago. And it's changed. Kids have changed, more brain sciences being done to really show us how kids are learning how to read. So this book was written by two educators that really showed how to shift the balanced literacy model more into the science of reading model, but also not to throw everything out that people that have been teaching for over 20 years have been doing. And we asked Seth in Georgia if they would support us having like a book study. And they did, so we started our book study. And then Allison found a class that was actually taught by the authors. It was an intense class. It was enough CEUs, I think, to almost count for a year of research. It was, it was pretty in-depth. So we were very thankful for those Tuesdays. We had a live webinar every Tuesday. And then we had to do a lot of it on our own. We would meet up here, do the class together until three, and then we'd pick up where we left off at home, give each other homework, read the book. And we're still in the process of discussing everything we have.
So we'll suggest, yeah.
Yes, but we're gonna share with you some of it.
Shall we, can I ask a question? Who are the authors in the book?
Jen Burkins and Carrie Yates. And they are consultants now, but they were in the education field in the classroom. And they, one of them, I think they both have doctorate in literacy. Oh, Dr. Yeah, Carrie does. But it was really neat because, you know, you read this and it's hard to be like, oh, my gosh, why was I doing it that way? And they really made it clear that you weren't that teacher if you were teaching a balanced literacy model. And kids are still learning how to read. It's just now we know better. Science makes us better stuff.
Yeah, they reiterated that every week through the shifts.
Yeah.
And that's the, you don't know until you know.
The shifting the balance that gets set up so it has different shifts. There we are, up in Katie's space, Title I's face, in big chairs. That's why we decided to. There's the cover of the book. I explained about the six shifts. This is shift one, rethinking how reading comprehensively gets. Because a lot of the time, you can read aloud and my just, my teacher might just read the book and say, that was a nice book, close it, and then off to the shelf, onto recess lunch or whatever. And the book really concentrates on talking about new vocabulary, life experiences, just really thinking about the book and making sure that children are listening as what you're reading. And it talks a lot about just listening comprehension in general, how that's the beginning step of reading. And it was really, you know, at home, we all know you read to a child before they're born, but that sometimes isn't always able to happen. And it talked about how the kids are missing an important part of their development, how it transfers into really impacting their comprehension level. So it really wants us to be focusing on building that vocab with them so that they have those things to draw on in their listening comprehension. Doesn't mean they have to read it, but they're listening and they're really storing all of those things in their brains. When they do hear it, they're like, oh, they already have that prior knowledge.
So that when they're reading words, when they're starting to be, you know, reading harder words like migration, then they already have this idea in their head of what migration is. So the next slide shows how that all pieces together. You got word reading like migration, listening comprehension, because you've heard that word read by your teacher in the passage or whatever. And then that correlates to your reading comprehension as you read future passages or books.
Okay, recommending to Phony McOren's instructions. So when I was taught how to teach reading, I mean, you've talked about phonics, we taught that way, but it wasn't the main focus. It was a lot more whole language. So, you know, you would teach your lesson, but then kids were just kind of, you gave them the book and you worked through that. But what they're saying and what research is now showing is that we really need to drive phoneme awareness. Phoneme awareness and phonics can be taught at the same time. But phoneme awareness is not something that you just stop in pre-K. It really keeps getting taught through the grade levels and probably up through third grade. Phoneme awareness is where you listen to some words and you can really manipulate those sounds. It's like word play. And what I've noticed is I've kind of changed going from kindergarten to pre-K back to kindergarten. What I've really tried to do this year, because I asked Georgia if I could do some training this summer and they paid for it, need to do a, like a month-long training this summer on phoneme awareness and phonics. I was able to take something that I would not have done regularly and try it with this class. And I'm very excited about how it's worked so far. It'll be interesting to see how data comes out at the end of the year. And that's kind of playing into what this book is saying.
That's phoneme awareness and just breaking down words into each, each sound. And then even manipulating the sounds, like if you took the P away and you put another sound there, and then it's like, hot, hot. So it's just manipulating the word play, the sounds.
And now that we're all kind of been talking about this a lot more, it's our team, like, it's really fun. Because like if we're talking with a kid, we're all kind of doing the same thing. Like, oh, you said lot? What if it put a P at the end of lot? You know, we just kind of like play off the jugs.
And here's shift three, reimagining the way that we teach phonics. So actually, you can go ahead and go to the next slide.
Sure.
So phonics is a systematic approach. And we know that as educators, but there's so many different programs. We're not sure which one's the best or which way, should you teach the alphabet A through Z? Should you teach it as it's easier written? Or should you teach it, there's just multiple ways. And so this program gives a systematic approach to teaching phonics. And they have their old school sequence, and, which just means like when you should teach what and what comes next in the sequence. And then actually gets some benchmarks for each grade level, which we.
Yeah, and they seem more appropriate.
Yeah, they're much more appropriate.
Yeah. And one of the things 3 through 5 might have mentioned in their presentation was they had that curriculum, oh, it kind of evaluated each curriculum.
Yes.
And what we found is when we went into this, we were like, oh, we need this big reading curriculum. We had some ideas. And then when 3 through 5 did their, their project, it was interesting to see that those ones that we thought were gonna hit all of these new things that we're learning, they got like Ds, you know? And there, what they found was that you really need to start just with a scope and sequence that everybody follows.
It's more about teacher education. We have qualified educated teachers. You don't need all the fancy bells and whistles. You just need well-trained teachers. This was huge for every single one of us. High-frequency words, those are sight words or dolch words or fry words. You might have heard some of those. This concept was brand new to us, how they said it. Because they said most of those words are decodable. So there's no sense in trying to memorize 100 and whatever words when most of them can be decoded.
That's when I felt bad about myself. Especially like you're not very lucky. We found that an Ally Warman who used to teach first grade here sent us this link. And 150, the 220 dolch words, the words that kids will start by in a first grade, are sight words, the ones that are seen the most in their texts. 150 of them can be sounded out, which that like blew my mind. And then I started looking and I was like, oh, yeah, it can. Like, they can sound that out. They just need to know the magic. You know, like all those strategies to teach them and we use sight words. That was pretty, yeah, pretty enlightening.
So this is, this is a list of the 13 most commonly used words in text that these children will be reading. And most of those can be sounded out, like an and or the, not the, but the, in is. So some of those can be sounded out.
And it was really neat to know that if they knew those 13 words of the 109 that they pulled out of that dolch words list, they, that is gonna cover 25 to 50% of those throughout the text in those early years. So really, you know, you want them, I think the old kindergarten benchmark used to be like 50-something sight words by the end of kindergarten. Like, that's not appropriate. And kids, you know, some kids can do that definitely. I'm not saying that you shouldn't strive for that, but really you should be focusing on what's apart and what's sound. Because that's just gonna help them a lot more.
This is another big one. Reinventing the way to choose the system. So when the student's coming across a word and they don't know it, the old way of using it was use the picture.
Yeah, the eye.
There's the picture, that'll help you. And so this program says, no, like, don't look at the picture. Like, that's the last thing you wanna teach a student to do when they're learning reading. All they're gonna do is look at the picture, they're not actually reading it. So, yeah, this is another big one.
And they, they just really want you to focus on those decoding skills. And they think that if you teach a kid first to rely on the picture, that that's not gonna, the decoding's not gonna be their go-to. The picture's gonna be their go-to, which it used to be that that's what we taught. But we'll show you in the next couple of slides, you can see the difference now, why, why the shift.
And then even reconsidering some texts for the beginning pre-verse. And you can go ahead and go to the next slide. So, yeah.
This was like the picture we were talking about. So these are like a level B, which is usually Chris, probably November-ish. Like, I like to dance after school. That's a level B. You want kids to be around there in Christmas themed kindergarten. The I am ham, I can nap is the same level on a decodable reader. Now, most kids would not, that I see typically, that the one I like to dance is harder for them to get to. You can see that the text is heavier. But in November, kids were reading this because they've already gone by their letters, all their sounds, and they're starting to blend them. So you can see by looking at the picture, that's really not helping them read that text. So you really have to focus on their decoding skills, which is what we're teaching. And we do have next steps, things that we realized that we needed to.
Yeah, and we've actually purchased several books from this company called Benchmark Education. And they have actually just recently gotten bored with Wiley.
Blessings, yeah. He's like the phonics guru. Yeah, they did a lot of work with this.
I've actually talked to the representative. She says that he's like famous now and everyone's like following him. He's got this whole phonics system, the whole way you teach, just reading to young readers. So they have these new decodable books. And I asked for a sample, so these are the samples, and I just bought them this week. So the teachers are actually going through them. And we can already tell how text-heavy the books are. But the students would actually be reading them instead of just looking at picture, trying to figure out what the word might be. They're actually gonna be reading. And all those, you know, like this is Lommo, this is Y, Long Beach, Bowting. So everything that they would learn in the phonics system, they would be applying in an actual book. Because a lot of times too, when they have those early readers, the content's kind of boring, the pictures are kind of blah, and boards, paper, which sometimes we like paper books because they can go home and they can keep reading in their home. But kids don't feel like they're actually readers until they have a book in their hand. So these books offer that. So that's something we're looking into, to possibly purchasing next year.
And we did, we put money in our budget, my budget was due, because we really, this was before we did this class and we really thought we were gonna be one of those big reading programs. But what we found was what we really need is more training, time to do the training, and time to really make our own materials that would follow their scope and sequence. And, you know, more books, so, decodable readers and stuff, so.
And actually, Shelley and I even started this school year, we had this bright idea that we were gonna make a tutorial for parents on how they could help their child to learn how to read. And then she's like, wait a minute. We had videos, we had the whole thing. We started, yeah, we were doing it the old way. We're like, we can't send this out to parents, we know better now. So we actually halted that, we'll start it again next year, but with our new knowledge of what we've learned about the science of reading.
Thanks, ladies. Thank you very much.
Public comments. Can they pass up the books?
Sure.
Yeah, that'd be great.
We'll read it.
Other comments or questions?
Oh, you got both.
I mean, having started life as a kindergarten teacher back in the 1970s. It's interesting to me to see just how this is. And not, not only the title is that, but in who knows in 10, 15 years. Somewhere else. But thank you for looking at what's current and what works for our kids. And then my only question is, is there, is there, are there materials like in our library or in the classrooms that can be kind of pulled and made? We're hoping that with the money that we did purchase, that there are, there are not full versions, but supplemental materials that you can buy. We did find pre-K uses hybrid phonics, hybrid phoneme awareness. It's almost, it's probably pretty scripted every day, but it follows that scope and sequence and it goes up to second grade. And those are only like $86 to $100 bucks for the book. But it tells you day one, this is what you do. And it builds on those skills every day. So we're hoping to be able to buy those or something like that for each class. And then just building that library, you know? We want, we want the teachers to be able to go in and say, okay, my kids are working on, you know, the long A sound. So we need to go in and we have this text that follows that phonicle. And then we have these centers, so they're gonna pull those. And Katie might be using them with Title I, but I might have a group of kids that, that are already using kindergarten. So it's just available for everyone, not just for our class. It's where it's done. These are like, there's nonfiction, video photographs.
I love the pictures. The pictures are really eye-hushing for the kiddos.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, ladies. Good job. Moving on then to comments, those various roles. Oh, I'm sorry, middle school, excuse me. Whoa, you're saying, what about us? Thank you for having us. You guys did an awesome job.
It is.
I kind of wish we would have gone closer. You guys, really, that was great. Used your time well. Thank you all for the opportunity to have Tuesdays, to work together and to really collaborate. I think in teaching, you feel like you're always trying to jump on the next thing, but you're not having time to really do what's happening in the classrooms. And this allowed us to really just stop and slow down and reevaluate what we were doing in the classroom and if we wanted to make any modifications or changes, we just reexamine our program. And it was nice to have that time. I lamented so much in the past that there's not. So really, thank you for that opportunity. We use this time to really discuss our vision, what the middle school time looks like, and what it can look like moving into the future. And something that you guys talked about was just the changing nature of students. So we looked at our students and we talked about engagement and we talked about applicable skills. And just what a typical school program might look like. And in looking at our vision, we kind of tossed around this idea for a long time and we decided to jump in, to look at an interdisciplinary approach to a unit and some project-based learning. And it's something that we've been talking about forever, just really, it's been hard to find the time to make that happen. So that's really what we dedicated our time to and looked at what we are all doing in each of our classrooms and where there are opportunities to overlap with content and also with skills to create a broader learning experience for the kids. And hopefully to help with engagement, because they can look at something through so many different lenses and perspectives. So the two things that really came out were, out of us just brainstorming and batting ideas around, were that idea of engagement for all learners, not just some learners, and also an authentic application of what we're doing. So, you know, we can read a book, you know, they can do a test, but how are they going to be able to apply that content or that skill or that knowledge outside of the classroom? So this was a really good opportunity for us to be able to try it out for the first time with all of us kind of on the same page. Not that we haven't been on the same page, but all of us able to come together and put something into action to see how it would go. So we put this interdisciplinary unit together. And you'll see here, we give a brief summary of what each of our roles will be. We'll talk more about this when we get into our individual slides. But for ELA, students would create profiles of rangy people who reflect the unique culture of our community in social studies, the rangy history and heritage studies that would culminate within oral history projects. So the whole theme of our unit was rangely study and trying to get kids involved and invested and knowing more about this community. So ELA and social studies really working together to do some research on this area and then go out into the community and find people to ultimately put together a project that, that we'll discuss more as we get into our presentation. Science and Atlantic salmon and ecosystem study that Sarita will talk more about. And then using data in math from rangely and actually applying it, doing analyzing, analyzing the data and plotting the data and figuring out the best approaches to what you do when you have a body of data and how to break it down and understand it. Sean, would you like to move to the next slide? Thank you. So our goals for this project were relevance and meaning. So really making the learning relevant for the kids. So again, this idea of a rangely study, it's relevant to all of our lives. What does it mean to all of the students? And then with that relevance and meaning, trying to find an authentic application of the learning. And we'll talk about that authentic application. We'll be going to see it in a few different ways throughout our unit or our presentations. Also, project-based learning. So we, some years ago, went to King Middle School. They are really project-based in their approach and their interdisciplinary. We were so blown away the way that all of the teams worked together and what the kids were able to create. And in the end, it was always, wasn't a test or an essay, but it was a project that could go back into the community and could use some use. So I think that's when we, years ago, started really batting around this idea of how can we do this? So for us, one of our goals was that project-based learning. And then recognizing learning as a whole, sorry. Recognizing learning as a whole and not segregated areas. So for the kids to really understand that what you learn in one class is applicable in another class and in different areas of life. So they're not seeing learning in these just little mappings that aren't connected at all. So, and it also allowed us to be collaborative and learn together as a whole and really build a sense of community through our learning and going out into rangely. So those were our goals for the project. So for the social studies aspect, the unit that, that I am doing in social studies, and everybody will, you know, have their own kind of piece of rangely, but I'm looking at the history and the story of rangely then and now. So the objective of the unit I'm doing is to explore the heritage and history of rangely through different disciplines, different lenses, and different perspectives. So part of what, excuse me, sorry, yes. So part of the way that we're going to do that is actually by going out into the community so that they won't just be, you know, reading from the few books I have in the classroom, looking at pictures on the smartphone. We're actually gonna go out into the community. We're going to the Outdoor Heritage Museum where we'll have, I've been working with the new history director at the museum, Michelle Landry, and she's wonderful. And we've been collaborating on how to design a program that will work with the kids. And she has two community volunteers who are going to come in and work with the kids and bring them through. And then we'll have some guiding questions that the students will need to journal on and think about while they're looking at the artifacts. And she's also arranged for a scavenger hunt in the museum so that they can kind of get some guided time with the docents. And then some alone times they go through the museum. But I also see this as a really good opportunity for kids to learn how to be out in the community in a situation, like when they're in a museum, and to just practice with some of the etiquette and how to conduct themselves. All because of COVID, we've been kind of in our own bubbles for so long. So I think this is a really nice, real world opportunity for them to just practice those skills. The primary standard for my unit that I'm going to be focusing on is just really looking at secondary and primary sources as they work through to develop that historical perspective. And some of the primary sources will be through doing interviews with people in the community. And this is George, we'll talk about that as well. But we're going to look at the history, the then. And we're going to look at the history that's happening in front of us now and have kids out meeting people in the community and getting their stories. And the goal, the student goal is to increase overall engagement and learning through the interdisciplinary, project-based study. But I think with project-based learning, the application that's really important is being able to give back to the community. So part of the goal is through this study that there'll be a way to apply that knowledge and create an artifact that will go back to the town of rangely. And that's where Robin will pick up.
Next slide.
Yep, thank you. So that's a picture of the Nile Historical Cemetery. And it's one of those artifacts that we have right in our own backyard. How many of you have been to that cemetery and want to be great? So, so just a couple. That's Luther Court up on the left. That's his headstone. I believe he, that was the first family who came to rangely. And they actually were embarrassed by their last name, believe it or not. So they changed it. It was Nile, right? It became Nile? I think so. Nile or, I can't remember right now, but they changed the name. So there are people in rangely who are descendants of that family or there have been people here. And.
Oh, my Niles, yeah, I go.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. They changed the last name. So anyway, these are two of the headstones at the Nile Cemetery, which is right on Route 4. So you all drive by it, but it looks like the headstones were cleaned maybe in the past year because they're very white. And so my piece of this is for my students to create an interview in which they can have oral histories from. in which they can have oral histories from people who they select. So to kick the project off, we're going to do a day of field trips that Kelsey explained apart. And we'll be going there and we'll do some headstone rubbing. And then we'll come back and just do a little finite research, but see what they can find out about these people whose names they rubbed when they were in the cemetery. And the eventual goal, this will happen this year, is that they will go out into the community and choose a person who they would actually really like to interview, somebody who they think is important and relevant, has meaning to them. And from that interview, we'll of course spend a lot of time working on developing good, deep questions. They will then write narrative essays on those people. And the narrative essays will capture the people. I've done this before, a really long time ago. Karen, I think you were around. Absolutely, we were around when I did the skiing project. And we had the premiere at the theater. And so we interviewed people who were instrumental in skiing in the Rangeli community. And that book exists at the public library now. So if you want to see it, it's there. And it was a multidisciplinary unit. So we involved high school and the art department. And at the time, I was teaching, I think, third and fourth grade. But the artifacts are really beautiful ones that we created. So this is going to be some of that. So we'll come up with these written profiles that will have permanent link. And let's see, what else is there to say? I think that really, that is my piece of this.
But that previous project you did, what is at our public library now?
It is, yeah. It is. There's a, there was a movie, which I sadly do not have. It was on a DVD. We premiered the movie. High school was involved in it. And we premiered it at the movie theater. But the book that my kids primarily did includes sketches and writing about Roger Page and Patsy Page. And just like, I can't remember everyone now, but it was pretty comprehensive and it was huge fun to do. So I think the really important part of this is that students will have student choice. Because if they just are given a name, it might not be a person that they would connect to. But you'll be one of the subjects of an interview. So yeah, that's it. That's my piece. Oh, sure.
I think that's what we're going to do on. So one thing with this book is, I'm working with Michelle Landry. I was talking about with the book, we would like to have it be something that can live in the historical society. And then each year, you know, if this project continues, continue and keep adding to it. So in a sense, there will be a reference or a current history and stories of people who are making history, you know, in our recent years. So that this will be a living dynamic document that can grow all of the time.
By the way, you forgot to mention this thing, but Michelle Minz.
Oh, yeah.
From Campbello. She was the dresser, director at Campbello at FDR's Summer Home.
And she's really excited to collaborate with the school. We actually are talking about in the fall, Barry Dana, who is from the Knott's Gut Nation. He's, does a lot of education around the state of Maine on the Wampanoag. And we've already been talking to him, she and I, about him coming in the fall. And she said that the museum can help sponsor that. So she's really excited to develop this relationship. So that's something that was kind of born out of this, planning these field trips. These natural relationships are popping up. And I forgot to mention too, we are going to go to the Maine Forestry Museum as well. And we're going to watch one other place, the Hatchery, but I'm not going to talk about that because...
Me, because that's my amazing person.
Okay, sure.
Yeah, so I'm sorry to interrupt. I'm a new science teacher. I didn't come and meet you guys when I got hired and I'm so sorry. But it was like eighth grade, a recital night from the previous school. But this is me. Very nice to meet you all. And my little bit with the interdisciplinary project is the Atlantic salmon. And very good timing, Seth, on your presence because Seth has one kind of made me a little cookie. Hey, this is a cool idea. You should do it. And I'm kind of like the yes girl. So I was like, yeah, let's go. Let's give it a go. And it ties in really nicely with our project that we're doing as a team. So the Atlantic salmon have been mostly being raised by the sixth grade. And we got them as eggs. They're now albin. And every day, it's just something new in the tank. You can start to see their fins, their dorsal fin farming, which is really cool. And we're going to be releasing these Atlantic salmon into smalls fall. So it's not like they're going to be going somewhere foreign. It's right here in their backyard. So really good personal connection. And so up to the point before we got the eggs, having one of those Tuesday PD days was super important. I had my mentor from the Fish Bends program come. He spent about two and a half to three hours setting up this tank that's February 1st date. And I'm going, gosh, wow, that's a long time. But it was needed. So I appreciated that very, very much. And my mentor was just the sweetest. And we got the eggs pretty much at the after February break. And March 25th, they started to really hatch and come out. That's when there was a lot of activity. It was fun when the eggs came because fish is saying, fish is saying. And the kids like were just like, oh, okay. We put them in the tank and everything. But one of the things we did to tie it back to science more, so just a neat thing happening in the classroom, our whole new game this year has been life science. So biology, anatomy, and ecology is pretty much what I like to finish out with in the spring just because of the beautiful weather. It was an excuse to get outside and connect some science concepts. So we did the life cycles and then we looked at how they were impacted by humans as well as other factors within their ecosystem. And I think the kids, for the most part, have a lot of fun. We still have the big release so that anticipation is building up. And that's going to happen May 27th. So ready for the memorial weekend. And we're hopefully going to have a main guide there. And I still, it's on my to-do list, is to get in touch with the newspaper. Eileen Holcomb has also been a huge part of this process. Yeah, she is amazing. So we're going to try and get a newspaper to just like come out.
She has a really comprehensive program every summer for students. It's one day a week where she kind of runs them through the main guide, guiding process. And the kids do a lot with that. So she'll be ideal.
Oh, she has been, yeah.
Connect them with the kids later on.
Yes, yes. They made her cards for like saying thank you for the fish. But yeah, she's been, she's been amazing. But that's kind of been my piece of it. And I'm not going to say anymore because then it's going to go to jail. Another little piece.
All right, so with the sixth and seventh graders, I have the standards of data displays and displaying sample data. So I'm picking up the fish theme and the district theme. And we're going to do some data on the Rangeli Lake ice updates that are all on books and all. So we're going to see what data displays might work well with that data. We'll see what they come up with. And then choosing some Franklin County data on the website. There's lots of history back in years of salmon release. So next year, the salmon data will be in that dataset and we'll be able to use that as well. So that's my plan. Haven't started it yet, but it's soon. The sixth graders are working on their data plots right now.
Thank you. So again, just thank you for this opportunity that we were able to slow down and breathe and talk and figure out what each other actually are doing and build together. It's been really great. It gave us time to plan and prepare and outline this unit, which we hope really will benefit the students. And I think it benefited us as a team as well. So moving forward, we can use this experience to build other collaborative project-based learning opportunities. If we feel like this really worked and it, and our student goals of engagement and that applied learning seem to have been a positive experience, then we can continue and build on this and perhaps build into other units. So we'll be getting students... Oh, whoops, there's an extra promise. Sorry about that. Hate that. But based on student feedback, you know, at the end of the unit, we'll be able to see what worked, what we might change and how it can keep growing to more areas within the community.
I think it's just exciting to hear what you have so productively used with the time that you've had available. And I can't even begin to tell you how much I support you having the professional development time to work together. I think it's critical to the overall development of your programs and kids directly benefit from that time you're able to spend working with one another.
I really appreciate, I wanted to say appreciate so much that, you know, when it was brought to all of you, that you agreed to this. And this is probably the first year, I think, in my teaching career where I haven't had people come to my classroom and complain about the lack of time to do everything. I think we really felt that we had time. It was wonderful.
We obviously used it very well. Thank you.
I think I really enjoy seeing like the role we're from one subject to the next. I feel like, you know, the collaboration between like the kids feel like they're really working towards something because you all kind of have the same theme per se, not necessarily exactly the same. But no, it keeps the kids engaged and entertained and it's really cool to see what you guys have been doing with that time. And I think it's really crucial and important. So good job, guys.
Thank you. Great job, ladies. All right. Now moving to the section of comments. I only have a couple of brief comments. I want to extend a personal appreciation to Deb, a lad who, as you all know where last week was Teacher Appreciation Week. And she came over to the school and organized goodies for the teachers. We had a fruit platter and some treats as a way of the board saying thank you for all of your hard work and your commitment to students here in Rangeli. And I appreciated that she took the time to do that for the board.
Thanks, Deb. The treats were really good. The treats were really good.
Yeah, that's right. It's not over yet. We're still planning other ways to say thank you.
Thank you.
So having said that, I'll move on to Georgia.
Okay. In the process of wrapping up teacher evaluations, Seth and I have been kind of working on those. We're in the process of completing those. This year, we were required to only do, really only do second year probationary. But we did do our first year teachers as well. Lots of planning happening for the end of the year, events. I just feel like the ball's starting to roll down the hill and it's just like going. But I forgot what that feeling feels like. We haven't really had that feeling in a while. So it's nice to have that feeling of, you know, all of these things and, you know, just it's exciting. I want to also announce that the Spring Concert is June 1st at 6:00 p.m. So put that on your calendars. And we are, me deep in interviewing for the three open teaching positions, one for grade five, middle school ELA, and high school English. So hopefully bringing some names to the board next month. And finally for me, as I announced, I believe it was last month, Doris Mitchell is retiring. And she wanted me to read something to you all. Dear Superintendent Campbell and RISU 78 School Board, After 35 years of teaching at Rangeli Lakes Regional School, I have decided to retire at the end of this school year. I'm grateful for the time I spent in this community, working to educate its children. First as a middle school teacher and then later as a fifth grade teacher. Sorry. I wasn't going to do this, but I kind of can't help it. I love her. I sincerely have enjoyed watching the students' learning grow academically as well as helping them navigate the social and emotional atmosphere of the classroom. One of the pleasures I have from teaching in the same school system for so long is to see former students successful in the life they have chosen. I am thankful for each of my coworkers, some of whom are my former students. It has been a pleasure to work with you, to be supported by you, and to learn from you. It is great to work in a place where so many people care for each other and the students they teach. To the current administration, thank you for your support and guidance during these challenging and unscripted pandemic years. I know many decisions were difficult to make, but I believe you all made the best decisions in the interest of students and staff. RLRS will always be a part of my identity. I am proud to say that it has been my second home. I will miss the challenge of working with students day in and day out. With love and gratitude and great affection, Doris Mitchell.
All that? Okay. Thank you so much, Georgia. Moving on to Seth.
Yeah, it's been busy, really busy. I can't remember where we're going, but it's a lot of, just a lot of good stuff going on. The softball, baseball teams in the school and high school softball are having fun. We had a tough game today. We have a lot of young kids and they're coming to blast. It's like the basics and it's fun. And yesterday, was it yesterday? When did we go to the main school masonry? Yesterday morning. Is it Tuesday? I thought today was, yeah, I was wondering if today was Thursday. So yesterday, Monday, we went to the main school masonry. And this is Mitchell's husband is a hoop. We got there and he greeted us and the one thing he taught us, it is not masonary, it's masonry. And that's the first lesson he teaches because he was a mason. He would go in and somebody'd say, thank you for doing our masonry. And he would correct them. And he goes, told the kids, he's like, that's not always the best method to get work or to deal with people. So his new mission is, the first lesson he teaches is it's masonry. I'm a pretty good mason. I think I might go to school there. We built a, I had known it was a competition beforehand on a trailer. We built a pyramid and the kids, like, it was awesome. We had two kids that were within three sixteenths of an inch of plum by eye. It was like five on the bottom, four, three, two, one. But that was a really cool visit. And that's part of the foster tech work in the middle school. We've had culinary arts going on now. We had carpentry. And the first was photography and they've had a ton of fun. So that was an excellent field trip for them. Ms. Mitchell's husband's a hoop. Yeah, we have interviews all day tomorrow. We're doing five interviews for the high school English teacher position. So we'll get them all done in one day. We'll see if we have to do some follow-ups, but we're starting. State testing windows are open. So we did, high school's done Nuiya. Everyone else starts next week. It's Crandall. We did session one of the science today and that was successful. Yeah, just a lot going on, you know. Look at the calendar. We've got four middle school field trips. Three middle school field trips this month. It's going fast. We also have the MLTI Student Conference too. Yeah, that's all I, yeah. That's what I have. I didn't know if I was going to make it for this. We're up on the field. We wrapped up and got here, so. But just a lot of good stuff going on and it's going to be done just like that, I think.
Twenty-seven days.
Yeah, twenty-seven days.
Okay, our student reps.
Our city softball started and we've had three games told so far. We have four games coming up this week, Wednesday and Friday. We've won one game, we've lost two. But overall, it's been a really fun experience and everybody's really enjoying it. It's been very fun to do. And prom is going to be May 28th and the seniors are, are you sure you're planning that?
All right. Also, the seniors have just started to plan graduation. We have graduation and class day. So we started to plan those. Graduation is June 11th. Class day is the 9th. And this past Friday, my dad talked about the Nuiya testing a little bit. But also this past Friday was the advanced placement deadlines. So there was seven students that took AP classes this year. In AP Art, Emily Eslack, Winnie Larashell, Lillia Valley, Logan Beeper, Ella Shaver, and Russell Quimby all submitted portfolios to the AP college board. They sent in physical copies of their best works and then they photographed the rest and wrote paragraphs about them to low receive scores on those. And I took the AP United States History exam. So all of those finished on Friday. So now everybody's kind of relieved because that all wrapped up. And I take the A P, um, United States history exam. So all of those finished on Friday. So now everybody's kind of relieved because that all wrapped up, but.
Thank you very much. It looks like it all went well. Thank you very much. Appreciate that. We'll move on to our committee reports. Uh, Kathy, the policy committee.
Um, we did not meet this month, but it was one of those months where it was too close to this meeting and not as late as we. So, uh, our meeting will have on June 6th.
Okay, June, we'll get June 6th. What time?
Uh, at 3:00, right? I'm leaving at 3:00.
What's your, I don't agree with what you mean, Seth.
I agree.
We have something before curriculum sometimes before then we go to classes, so 3:00, yeah.
3:00, yeah, we're gonna have curriculum before that.
Um, curriculum, yeah, I was gonna ask that question. I was gonna see if I could get that report now too. Because again, it's in the week this month, so it will be June 6th, either before or after the, uh, policy. So which will be teachers, workers, help?
Well, you're gonna be in schedule, who? I don't know.
Historically, you met at 2:30.
I would just schedule it.
Schedule it at 2:30?
Yeah, because we're doing baseball.
Okay.
All right. Well, schedule it for June 6th at 2:30. And we'll do the best we can.
Thank you very much, Kathy. And just a, a personal appreciation to you and all your hard work on the policy committee. I know last month we had a bearathon, I believe, of policy topics. So we are really in probably the best shape with our policy handbook that we've been in in years in terms of its currency. And that's due to your leadership and we really appreciate that. So thank you.
Thank you.
I know it's lots of hours to work on your part.
Just keeping me on my toes.
I'm not sure who's gonna report out for the finance committee. Uh, we were there. We were there today. We were there. Uh, and we.
I think really the discussion was about what is, what information is it that we really want to have, who we can follow.
Right.
And there wasn't really anything to discuss, yeah, per se, related to findings.
Okay, thanks, Georgia. I appreciate that. The facilities committee.
Well, I have a lot to talk about.
Oh, good.
About that, but I'll, I'll be brief. Um, we met last Thursday. We meet the first Thursday of the month at this conference room up here. And we talked about the, there's, Serita's still hiding over there. Yep, she is, about the middle school science room. Um, no surprise that things came in way over budget. So it's a work in progress to kind of figure out what will be, um, available for her if those things start to fall and what we can maybe push back another year. So, um, just everything's expensive and everything we're waiting for and there you go. The outdoor classroom, Sean gave us an update about that and the hot, I think, just a big quick summary, there's gonna be a hotspot available up there. If I remember my notes right, the range is anywhere from 300 to 500 deep, which is a pretty good range. Um, things are password protected. And I believe there's something for students, something for the general public and admin. Is that correct?
Yeah, outdoor Wi-Fi, um, access points positioned on the building. Really trying to strive for the outdoor classroom to have that activity, but also field and, um, yeah, it's a long process with a lot of paperwork and.
Thanks to Sean that is moving forward and he's really filling out all of the work behind the scenes. So, okay, thank you to you, Sean, for all that you did. The portable classroom and its floor is an ongoing challenge. Uh, Jeff has got some, some quotes and some information. It looks like what we're going to do is tear out what's old and yucky, um, put some sort of ceiling down and then a subfloor, a pad and new carpet. And that will hopefully solve the smell problem, the potential mold problem. It was also suggested that we put some sort of, not necessarily L O B, but those water hog mats. And put that outside as your first committee. That really will cut down on all of the, um, the jumping in on people. So that's, again, that hope is more than we were hoping for, but we're wheeling and dealing and trying to make that happen. Library shelving, we got three quotes from Ms. Abbey and it looks like we're gonna move forward with the demo shelving. I don't know if that's been ordered yet or not, but we'll see ahead.
We're, we're in the process.
Yeah, it's like everything. So if you want to buy, we need a full section replaced, we'll be able to do that happen, I think.
Right, so.
We forward, are you ready?
Yep. Um, we, Jeff also informed us that one of the buses did not pass inspection this time, rusted brackets, I believe. It's also pretty high mileage and so the plan is for just to take that one out of permission. Jeff feels we've got plenty of buses with this, with the fleet that we have and the plan is to, in the next budget cycle, put in, or new bus. A new bus. And then the other thing is with the E S R money that we've been gifted, uh, we have ordered a 14 passenger van that is ordered. And that will allow transportation. The nice thing about those is you don't need any sort of special license. Any licensed driver, we can drive one of those and hopefully that will, uh, cut down a little more efficient, I'm thinking, than some of the bigger buses. So that's something to look forward to. The water test, that is public information. It's come back and we're on the right track with all of that. And Sean and Jeff are gonna be doing some training this summer with, and right now with what kind of system? I got Siemens and that's all I got.
Yeah, um, yeah, the Zego system, migration from insights to Zego. So part of it's software computer type of stuff and the other part is moving forward and stuff, so.
That'll be some training, um, coming up for these children this summer. Is that correct?
Yeah, I'm working with, we, uh, a project manager reached out to me in regards to the, the console we need to purchase to put in the I T room. So with the, um, Siemens package we have purchased, one person can go to the, to the training. So I asked how much it was for the difficult person and who would be the right person to go. So either way, both of us need to have the information, but we'll find out who and when soon.
And thank you to everybody that stayed, all of these proposals and done all the research to figure out how much things are gonna cost and how long they're gonna have to wait for. It's, it's slow, but we're all in that same, in the same situation. Not all in the same boat, but all in the same situation, so.
The C committee. The committee, great. Any questions or comments? All right. Moving along to, uh, the communication groups. Neither Joanne nor, uh, or Chris are here this evening, but I think that group pretty much has wrapped up its obligation to meet the, uh, the law that passed in October, October the 18th specifically. It required school boards to have policies and procedures in place for communicating with both internally staff and then externally in the community. And I think over the course of this past year, we've done a lot of work around communication, school communication. And, uh, we have adopted two policies and directly, uh, addressed that. So in terms of meeting the, um, the essence of that law, we're in great shape and I think that committee's work is done. So we move on to appointments, resignations, nominations and transfers. And I'll turn it back over, uh, to Georgia.
Okay, so I, excuse me, I'm having a terrible time. Apologies right now. I do have, um, an appointment. Um, we have a new bus driver. He was hired May 2nd. His name is Kevin, uh, Banfield. And he comes to us from Sanford, Maine. He was a former manager of Ledgmere Transportation and also a former employee of Portsmouth Eagle Shinkyard. So we're looking to get him. And he's gonna be a golf course employee as well.
Goldy shoes.
After he drops.
We are at that conversation.
And I do have a number of resignations sadly. Russ Brooks, who has been a bus driver for us, he's been doing our foster tech, uh, run. He has resigned, uh, effective May 11th. Tina Russo, who was our therapist, has also resigned. Um, her, um, effective date of resignation will be May 13th. She is pursuing other interests and we're very happy for her. Brittany Russell, our pre-K, a guy who's six through eight interventionist, is refuck, is resigning effective the end of the school year. Sad to hear that. And also very sad to hear that Heidi Derry, our high school guidance counselor, student services director, and affirmative action officer is also resigning at the end of the school year. Her last date is still to be determined because her contract also was signed. So very sad about all of those.
Thank you, Georgia. So moving on to action item, oh, excuse me, nine, nine point one, motion to approve second year probationary teacher contracts. Want to speak to that, Georgia?
No, I think it's just, it's motion as read.
Just a motion as read. Okay, can I have, uh, someone make a motion? So, okay, thank you, Karen. And a second for Johanna. Okay, and that includes, uh, is it, how do you pronounce your first name? I apologize. It says here?
Serina.
Serita.
Yeah.
Randall, Rebecca Ellis, Serita, I'm sorry. I managed to massacre it by a bar. Kim, Kim Huckmeyer, Ashley Ferrara and Kate Willis.
Kate Willis. Katie Willis.
Katie Willis.
As a second year probationary.
Any discussion? Yes.
Yeah, just a comment, uh, just how happy we are with Serita. She's, I, um, evaluate her, observe her. She's in my team. Like the Saman thing, like it was in the summer, right? I was like, hey, you want to do Saman? Oh, sure. And she's done an amazing job with that. Um, I've been in her class a lot. I did, for our, spent half day in there for our dissection. She's got a great way with kids, built relationships and we're very lucky. Just for that, so thank you.
And I do the others. I did all the other, I made all the other ones and ditto to that. We're so lucky to have them. Kim Huckmeyer is a, a veteran teacher who's brought a lot to the table this year. Rebecca Ellis is our, gonna be a new mother here in a little bit. We're all very happy for her. And Ashley Ferrara, she's just nailing it in pre-K. And Katie Willis doing a great job with the intervention and the G T. And that's a lot to manage. Doing a great job of that.
Terrific. Okay, so all those in favor are accepting that motion? No move? Okay, terrific. We'll go on then to a motion to approve the continuing teacher contracts. Rowena Hathaway and Lindsay Richards. So move, can I have a second? Okay. Uh, any questions or comments?
I, also, these are both on my team. Um, so two years, we know what's going on in two years. So both of these people did their first two years of education during, uh, the pandemic and coming out of it. Lindsay Richards started when, remember, we had a, well, we had a phys ed teacher that left and then she came and then she had a baby and had to leave and then came back. Fully remote and she did it. Um, so just, she's doing a great job, uh, doing some good things. She does a lot of extra stuff like the winter kids and puts it all in. Just happily teaching all of our high school math, do all of this with remote and in person and managing multiple preps in one room. So we're very lucky that we have them through this and it's impressive that your first years of education were through that, so.
Yes, we are.
I guess we're it.
How many great ones do you have?
I just wanted to say.
I would guess correct, because it's been a tough couple of years and we just wanted to advise them, well, step up to the plate and send them a wonderful job. So all those in favor of approving that motion? Moving on to our next motion to approve the overnight and out of state field trip to Music in the Parks Musical Festival. And I think.
I was telling you, she is like a minute away too. She was trying to. She was next to me. How much time did I have?
I wasn't sure what she meant. I was like, you're trying to get somewhere. Did she need to Google meet or? I, I get it now. Now it'll make sense to me.
Oh, wait, wait a minute. We can go, we can, let's flip nine, three and nine four. Let's go on.
I think she's both of those. Oh, she's both.
She's both of those. Okay, we'll do 10-1 instead. Okay, a motion to set the date for the June meeting. And as you probably realize, that that meeting is specific for us to approve the validation of the town vote on the budget. Essentially, that's a, our only piece of, of work, uh, for that meeting that night. So we would normally be scheduled to meet on the 14th of June, have our board meeting that Tuesday. And, um, the town vote will be in by then. So we could either meet on that date, our, our regularly scheduled time. And/or we could meet briefly on Wednesday, the 15th. So I guess I'm looking to you to give me some guidance on what you think is the most appropriate.
Yes, Kayla. If I agree with town 15th for vacation, I can always assume not a problem, but just for peace of mind, I agree we'll be battling that thing.
Any other comments, Kayla?
I'm, I'm confused. That's all of our decisions?
Well, we have, we actually have to get together to meet after the validation vote for the towns to approve that.
Yeah.
So we have to get together for that. But I guess, so the question is, do we want to meet and have our regular board meeting on the 14th? And then come back together on the 15th to approve that? Or do we just want to have our board meeting on the 15th?
With the.
With the validation.
So it would be regular business and the validation.
Right, because, and I apologize, I didn't do a very good job of explaining. Because those two things need to have happened. And the validation needs to occur the day after. So, um, can I get a motion for the board meeting on either the 14th or the 15th? Recognize that if we meet on our regularly scheduled time, we'll have to come back together on the 15th anyway for a short period. Make a motion, that would just roll it all into one and meet on the 15th. Can I have a second to that motion? Thank you, Kayla. Um, any discussion? Need for a good discussion on that. And obviously, Kayla, you can join us by Zoom. Thank you. All those in favor? Okay, so, so we'll move our board meeting to the 15th. Great. Erin, you're with us now. So we have a motion to approve first your state field trip, uh, Music in the Park, the music festival.
I would have been here sooner, but I'd rate for done, so.
We appreciate that.
And he did not want to cross the road. So anyway, the Six Flags trip is Music in the Parks. Um, we had originally planned to do it at the beginning of the year and then there weren't any overnight trips, so we bagged it. And then we've decided there could be overnight trips, so we decided to scramble and throw it together. My chorus is about 18 kids this year. Um, we meet around once a week for 30 minutes-ish. Um, and the Six Flags trip is the same trip pretty much that we've taken, I think, 10 years. I think I've done it at least eight or some times before. We're staying at a different hotel because that hotel I usually stay at is not available, but otherwise it's all pretty much the same.
Can I have a motion and then we'll, we'll have a discussion?
Sure.
So move, Kayla, second, Johanna?
I have a quick question. Are there any, any further, are there any more COVID cautionary restrictions in place at this point, Erin, for that, like on the bus or?
Not that I'm aware of.
In the hotel. Not all of that's been worked.
I believe so.
Other questions?
My apartment, but where in Six Flags?
It's in Springfield-ish, Mass.
The only one I knew was New Jersey.
Any other questions or comments?
How many years have you been doing it?
I think like eight or 10. Uh, we've done it a lot. Seventh grade was the last time we went, so five years ago.
And the kids pay for themselves or?
Nope, we fundraised, we fundraised, we were supposed to go in 2020 and we had all the money funded then and we didn't get to go, so.
You just rolled that.
Yep.
All those in favor? Terrific. Okay. And then the next is a motion to approve, um, the overnight senior trip to Old Orchard Beach. Sorry, move. No move? Second? Okay, Erin?
Okay, so, uh, my seniors worked on Friday and yesterday to prepare, um, an idea for our senior kind of outing. We were gonna just do a one day thing, but then we decided we couldn't cram everything all into one day because we live so far away from everything. So, uh, the plan. So, the plan is to go down and spend Sunday, the 29th, at Fun Town and then go mini-golfing at Pirate's Cove. And then, we're spending the night in a hotel in Portland. And then, the next day, we're going to, hopefully, if it's sunny, hang out at OOB and play some, you know, beach games and get our tan on. Just getting out of tan. But that's about it, yeah.
Any questions or discussion?
Sounds fun.
All those in favor? Okay. Well, good luck and enjoy those trips, Erin. Thanks for coming back. So, I think that covers all of our business for today. Can I have a motion to adjourn? Okay. All those in favor? Okay, thank you very much. Exactly. That warm weather.
You need to bring your backpack.